...for Monday, September 23rd, 2019. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Guards keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of council meeting minutes. Can I get a motion for that set of minutes from September 9th? Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, September 9th as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to correct before we formally adopt them? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then I'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Our city clerk has just let us, let me know that we have an additional delegation that wished to present in our scheduled delegations. So if we could adopt the agenda with the addition of item 13.3, presentation from QP Local 787. Counselor Minhas.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the agenda as presented, add it to 13.3 delegation request form.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Counselor Minhas. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. And that brings us to our first delegation portion of the agenda. This is our open delegation opportunity where any member of the community is welcome to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. I don't see anybody rushing the speaker's podium, so I guess I would just remind the community that we do have two opportunities to present at every regular city council meeting with our change in process. There's this open delegation opportunity in the afternoon and also a scheduled delegation opportunity in our evening session, which I think we have three scheduled presentations later on this evening. But seeing that there's nobody coming forward for our open delegation, we'll move on. We also have no items of unfinished business, and so I think that takes us to reports. And item 7.1, election sign, this is the result of election sign by law. This is a result of a notice of motion from Counselor Bressi. Counselor Bressi, if you'd care to maybe make the motion and then introduce it if you'd like to.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I've got two motions that I'm going to make today. I'll make one for now, and we'll see where that goes before I make the other one. And I'm going to move that council direct administration to prepare and present to the appropriate standing committee a recommended list of designated election sign locations. Just speak this to this for a little bit. I think that there's a problem in our community with election signs, and that is that they're confusing on where they can go, and we use a lot of staff time, as we all witnessed through the last municipal election. We use a lot of staff time approving sign locations and talking to candidates when signs went up in appropriate locations. There's a lot of staff time that was used up. And I don't know about the rest of the candidates, but I know I spent a lot of time figuring out where signs went instead of knocking on doors and actually talking to people in the, in the community. I also noticed that despite trying my hardest, I got signs up in locations they weren't allowed a couple of times. And I know that every single person that got elected, so all of us and a number of other candidates as well, also got signs up in locations where they were prohibited last election. That's a real problem for me when you've got a bunch of people with good conscience that are having troubles following a bylaw just because they're having troubles figuring out the interpretation of it. So there's an issue for candidates, there's an issue for staff. I'd also note that during the last provincial election, I got calls from, from three different campaigns asking if I could help them figure out election signs because they couldn't figure it out for themselves, and they'd been given contradictory information from city staff as they were talking about where they could be or could not be. And as I dug into why is it so hard to figure out signs, I was reading our use of public lands by law, and there's a section in it where it says, "Election signs are permitted on municipal property only as designated by council." So our bylaw says that you can only put election signs where council designates, and then it lists a whole bunch of places where you can't put signs, but it doesn't actually have a list of where you can put signs. And I suspect that it's that not following through with having designated locations approved by council, it's creating a lot of this work and a lot of this confusion. So I've got a few ideas on how we could potentially fix this issue, but I think the most sensible one would be to follow the example of the city of Red Deer and a number of other municipalities in picking and creating a map and creating a list of places of you can have signs here, 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 here throughout the city. And then it's really easy for candidates to know, I could put a sign here, but not here. It's really easy for our staff to be able to tell people exactly where they could put signs. It's really easy for people in the community who want to monitor if the candidate they're thinking about voting for follows bylaws or not to monitor that. So I think it's a sensible, it's a sensible way to go about this. I'd also point out that in the past, this is how the city of Grand Prairie has approached signs for nonprofit events, where we've told nonprofit organizations who want to put up signs, these are the boulevards and these are the public streets where you can put signs. It's something we've already done for nonprofit signs, and it's something other community signs are using very successfully for elections. So I think this is a sensible way to close the loop on our bylaw where we're saying you can only put signs as designated by council, but we haven't actually designated that location. I hope council will support this motion.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate from council? Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. First, I want to commend Counselor Bressi for bringing this up in a timely manner because we'll have a couple of years to make things right before the next election, and I think that's a good idea. And I support the motion because there definitely is confusion out there. There's extra work created for candidates and/or their campaign managers, and I think the process could be a whole lot simpler, and we'll look forward to seeing some recommended changes.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. I see on my screen it comes up as administration, too. Is that the chief of staff? Mr. Bork.
Thank you, Mayor Given. One piece of information I'd like to share with council before we receive direction on the specific motion is that administration's current work plan is a consolidation of existing election sign bylaws. There's currently four, four different bylaws where there's references to, to election signage plus an annex to a fifth. So in, regardless of the direction on this motion, there is some work going to be done on the election bylaw, and we'll receive specific direction on this.
Thanks very much, Mr. Bork. Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. I'd like to propose a friendly amendment, perhaps. I, I think that that may be a little, is that, is that in order?
Technically, there's no such thing. Is it a friendly amendment?
An amendment to the, to the motion, but it is...
Intended to be friendly.
Without ranker. I think that your, your request is maybe a little narrow, and I think administration may be able to come up with something that simplifies, which really is your point, that may say that these are limited places where you can put signs, or it may differently simplify how election sign, how, how it's decided where election signs go. So I would like to amend, just to say that administration simplify the bylaw.
I think...
Refresh my memory on how that first one was worded.
Yeah, so the motion was to prepare and present to the appropriate standing committee a recommended list of designated election sign locations. Quite a specific motion. I think the amendment is, substantially changes the motion. So if, if this motion didn't pass, then that would maybe be a subsequent one, but I think it just changes the nature of the motion so substantially that it would be...
What if we just, a recommended list of where election signs may go, or, or another method of simplifying the process?
Or other opportunities to simplify the election sign process.
Certainly.
Okay. I think that that contains Counselor Bressi's original intent and adds the opportunity for administration to identify other simplification to the election sign by law, which Mr. Bork mentioned that administration was, was under their intent to do anyhow. I think that that's more in the nature of, of an amendment, just providing that encouragement for administration to look at other areas and opportunities to simplify. So let's have discussion or debate on Counselor Friesen's amendment. I see Counselor Bressi was in the queue previous. Counselor Bressi?
Yeah, it's a, it's an amendment that I'm likely to support, but I'm still thinking through, and just a little bit of history about this. The reason I made a really specific solution was because I brought up election signs to, to the, to, at the committee level. And at the committee level, the discussion really was, yeah, there might be some openness to changing rules around signs, but we don't really know what direction we want to go with. And I was asked by committee to come back with specific recommendations, ideas of what I thought we should do with signs. The reason I decided to go for a notice of motion and come straight to council was because I'd hate for a committee to direct administration to put work into a specific direction that council itself wouldn't be, wouldn't be supportive of. And so kind of my thinking was, let's figure out, get a little bit specific here about what we, exactly what we want to do before they put a lot of work in. So for that reason, I'm kind of 50/50 on if I'm going to support this amendment or not, because I'm always happy to have more conversation. I don't want to just ram something through today if that's not council's will. But at the same time, I don't want to go through the committee and back to the council cycle again.
It's Counselor Bressi. I see Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I appreciate the intent of Counselor Bressi and Counselor Friesen. However, I can't support this motion at this time. I am prepared to wait at this time to see what administration comes back with, with the bylaw changes and, and as a compliation of a few documents come together, I'm comfortable that administration will take this discussion into consideration and bring something to council for further discussion. So at this time, I appreciate the intent. I just think it's a little bit early, and I'm comfortable just waiting until administration comes back with their suggestions, so I, I can't support the motion at this time.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. I see Mr. Bork.
Thank you, Mayor Given. As I said, we will be bringing forward a consolidated bylaw. My advice would be that Counselor Bressi's motion is a significantly different model than we currently have, and that if that was the direction of council, that they should provide clarity on, on, on switching the model, which would be different than a consolidation and a simplification of processes, which we will be in our regular work plan.
Thanks very much. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I am in favor of the amendment because what it does is allows Counselor Bressi's specific direction to continue, but it also allows for administration, upon investigation of the situation and the options, to, to come back with more than just what Counselor Bressi has asked for if, if something occurs to them that might be of value to us. So I will be supporting the amendment.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Any other discussion or debate on Counselor Friesen's amendment? I'll just speak up to say that I'm going to support the amendment as well. I think it really is the nature of the work administration was likely to do anyhow, but is clear that council has an intent with the addition of the amendment to say, find any other efficiencies or red tape that we could cut in this process, and with the main part of the motion from Counselor Bressi, specifically build it around the idea of designated sign locations, which I'm supportive of. And so for that reason, I support the amendment and the main motion. Counselor Bressi?
Sorry, I'm, so maybe I've got a different understanding of the motion than Mayor Given has, has a speaking opposition, and maybe it changed my mind, but if this motion passes, what's administration's understanding of the motion? Would this be directing administration to, the motion if we pass this amendment and it passed as amended? So would the understanding of administration be that they are, that they are building a new process around election sign designated locations, or they're just simplifying what's going on, or they're doing, or they're just picking an approach they feel is best? I just don't know if this amendment passes what we're actually asking administration to do.
So I will, and maybe we can get the motion read back. It's important that we all know exactly what we're voting on, but what I think I heard Counselor Friesen say was, "And other opportunities for improvement or simplification rather than alternate." Or other, okay. And so if our city clerk just wants to confirm what the motion is, and then we'll ask administration for how they would interpret that.
The motion is council direct administration to prepare and present to the appropriate standing committee a recommended list of designated election sign locations or other opportunities to simplify the election sign process.
So there we go, council. That's the motion that we have. I'll maybe look to Mr. Bork and put him on the spot to say how would administration interpret that. Is that clear enough around the intent of designated sign locations, or is it ambiguous? Mr. Bork?
We would interpret that as, as proposing alternative, or designated sign locations as well as cleaning up and consolidating the bylaws. So we actually, I don't see much difference between the amendment and the work we were going to do if the original motion had just passed.
Okay, okay. Thanks for that, Mr. Bork. So administration's interpretation would be that the designated sign locations would be the main part, and with the amendment, it gives administration clear direction that we're looking for other opportunities to refine the process, but not to have other alternate ways of managing signs or locations. So if we're all clear on that, is there any other discussion or debate on Counselor Friesen's amendment? Seeing none, then we'll call for the vote on Counselor Friesen's amendment. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll carry on to the main motion as amended. Is there any need for any additional discussion or debate on the main motion as amended? Does anybody ringing in? Then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi had a subsequent motion from your notice of motion as well.
I, I did, but I think in light of the amendment we made and what I heard from administration, I don't think that second motion's actually needed at this time. So if it's all right with you, I think I'm okay moving on from this topic. Or do I have to make the motion since I made a notice of motion last time?
I'm not sure that I've ever had a notice of motion, motion withdrawn before, so I'll look to our legislative services.
So as a notice of motion, you did present it as a, an opportunity to discuss and debate the, the motion. In fact, the motion hasn't been made, so it doesn't belong to the assembly yet. So at that point...
So Counselor Bressi is essentially choosing not to make that motion, and that's fine?
Yes.
Okay. That's great. If there's no other business on item 7.1, then we will move on to committee business, starting with 8.1, council committee of the whole from September 10th. Could I get a motion to adopt that set of minutes from that brief meeting? Counselor Friesen? Sorry, Counsel Friesen, I hit the wrong button.
Thank you. So I will move that council approve the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held Tuesday, September 10, 2019 as presented.
Thanks, Counsel Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions? It wasn't that long a meeting, so I'd be surprised if there was that many things that could have been recorded incorrectly. Doesn't look like there were, in, in any case, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor, I've got a couple of people in the queue. Counselor O'Toole.
8.1, community group funding. I move that council approve the 2020 community group funding grant allocations in appendix B as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Open for discussion and debate. I see Counselor Friesen and then Counselor Bressi. Counselor Friesen? Intended to be for the last motion. No problem? Sure. Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I want to apologize to council. I had a misunderstanding of a change that was being made at the committee of the whole funding, and that was in regards to the street performers. There was an original typo that they were being given more than they had requested, and that got revised down. That got revised down to $14,000, which is about 32... So it got revised down to 14,000, which is $3,320 less than they received last year and $1,000 less than the request. I think that we should give, I think that we should give them what they requested, which was $15,000, and it's still over $2,000 less than they received last year. So I'm going to move that council amend the 2020 grant recommendation for the Street Performers Festival to $15,000.
Sure. So amend appendix B to reflect $15,000 for them. Yeah, sure. Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Just say from that meeting, I think it was also my recollection, we did ask about the overfunding, which was a bit odd, given the context of the, the overall community group funding. Administration reported that it was a typo and that would be amended. I don't think we were clear that it was going to be amended to less. I think we were all understanding that it was going to be to their request amount. So I appreciate Counselor Bressi bringing that forward. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And we'll take us to item 8.2, Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee. Counselor Clayton. Sorry, that was Counselor Bressi that made, sorry, legislators, just making sure to get that right. Did Counselor Bressi make the main motion? Counsel, thank you. So thank you very much. So that was a motion on the amendment that we just passed. We still have to vote on Counselor O'Toole's main motion as amended. Thank you very much. There's a reason that there's somebody here to catch those kind of things. Much appreciated. So any discussion or debate on Counselor O'Toole's motion as amended? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Okay, got that done. Thank you very much for that catch, and that'll take us to Infrastructure and Protective Services, Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd move that council pass the, or sorry, adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting of September 17th as presented.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton, anything you want to highlight from that?
Sure, just a couple of quick things. At the top of the list, economic development, the downtown incentives program is open for applications until September 30th. Those who aren't aware, it includes an urban residential grant, a demolition grant, as well as a patio grant. And, and an RFP has already gone out for a qualified site selector to develop a targeted industrial attraction strategy. In addition, in the verbal report, a couple of other things were discussed, one being the community and social development, the AUMA inclusion grant was received. So this gave us $50,000 to evaluate the inclusiveness of, of our organization and to advance our strategies. The RFA for the winter emergency response is currently being, was analyzed last week, and evaluations of the proponent for the intermunicipal grant are underway, so we're expecting to hear back from that in the near future as we're getting closer to the end of September and, and the temporary transition site that's currently in place will, a strategy will come out of that and come to committee shortly. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. We'll move on to item 8.3, Corporate Services Committee, and Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council approve the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, September 17th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, seeing no one ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, you have some business rising.
Yes, we have a motion to pass, well, I'll go through it. Council, give first reading to bylaw C-1388, being the city administration bylaw, and to speak on that, this bylaw will reestablish the position of city clerk as a designated officer and incorporate certain duties to align with the current duties of the Legislative Services Department.
Okay, that's Counselor O'Toole. So a motion for first reading. I will call for the vote on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I move that we give second reading to bylaw C-1388.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, please vote. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
And Mayor Given, I move that we have third reading of bylaw C-1388 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So a motion to have third and final reading. In order for council to have all three readings of a bylaw at the same meeting, we must have this motion to have third and final reading. If this motion doesn't pass unanimously, then we would have that last reading of the bylaw at our next council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading this afternoon? I don't see anyone ringing in, so please vote. Thank you. Counselor O'Toole, we can.
Okay, I'd like to give third reading. I'd like to move that we give third reading to bylaw C-1388, being the city administration bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Counselor O'Toole, anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Ms. Walker, the, the director services area is a very busy department, and there was a number of items that I'll just touch on. Assessment and taxation, assessors are working very hard at this time of the year to, on projects for the 2020 and supplementary assessments. Corporate facility management, we've got a group working on that. And the annual aquatic maintenance at the East Link Center concluded over the weekend, and consultants began the second round of facility condition assessments last week. Finance, administration is working on the August month end, as well as the P-card cardholder training. And the human resources, the health and safety audit is underway, and I understand we did really well on the audit. So next one was the information technology service. Administration is working with the regional partners in the area to see if we can come up with some ICF technology and work that into the program as well, so. And procurement is always busy, and administration provided logistics, support to temporary transition site, and yeah, that would be my report for today.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. That'll take us to 8.4 in the Community Living Committee, and Counselor Bressi, I think you were standing in for Counsel Thieson, and it's a good thing you were, because he's not here again this evening. So Counselor Bressi, if you'd like to take it away.
Great. I would move that council approve the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, September 17th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate? Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. My understanding is that for the next item of business, administration's got a presentation. I'm wondering if it'd be out of order to ask for that before I make the motions?
Sure. From the committee meeting, there was a request for some additional visual information and some changes made to the sign concepts that were presented at committee, and that may influence how some council members wish to proceed with this. And so I think Ms. Casualy has some information for us. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The, at the last Community Living Committee, it was discussed that there was an engagement session that provided an opportunity for the public to provide input on some designs that were presented, and there was a, a design that certainly there was overwhelming feedback for. At the Community Living Committee meeting, there were some additional elements that were discussed. So there are two entrance feature design options, rough drawings, that I have available today that we could discuss.
So those are up. If you'd like to describe the differences from what committee saw, the changes that administration made based on the committee feedback.
Certainly. So one of the recommendations from the previous sign was to incorporate the city logo in some way, so that has been done on this first element. There was also so some discussion as in the previous design, the text was at the bottom of the sign, so this elevates it. So there is no concerns in terms of seasonal changes, no impacts like that. This would also allow for some additional landscaping opportunities around the feature. So this particular sign just says this city logo information, the city of Grand Prairie. And the second one offers the text, same design, with the text being different as welcome to Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much. Maybe we can just look at the first again, which really just has the city of across the top, where the second one adds the sort of welcome greeting. So with that, Counselor Bressey, would you be prepared to make a motion?
I definitely would. Would you like me to split this motion out or make it in one big one?
Let's do, maybe let's do the first. I appreciate administration gave us options. If we do the first, and we should reflect which version, I see version 2.1, and is the second one version 2.2? 2.11? Great. I can't even keep straight who's making amendments to what motions. I'm not sure how I'll do all those subnumbers. So Counselor Bressey, I think what you should do is make the motion that is proceed with the detailed design drawings as reflected in.
Oh, and I get to be the first one to take a stab at maybe picking one. Ooh, that's something to tell the grandkids, maybe I better pick right. Well, I would move that council directed administration as follows, proceed with the detailed design drawings and applicable permits for version And to speak to to speak to this on two levels. One is for why I think it's important to move forward with an entrance sign. I I I think that there is something about welcoming people to our city with something that's visually important, that's great. I think that there's something about pride of place that I want to give our give our residents. So I think there is some merit to welcome signs. I mean, that I know that there's been a lot of conversation about this in the committee of is it mostly saying it's great, but should we spend this money on this right now? And so I'd say I'd point out and I'd highlight to council that this is something which was set, money was set aside, and this was initiated by the past council due to, my understanding is due with to some issues with the province, it took a long time coming to fruition. I think that whatever we think of a project, we should, we should be very hesitant to kill something that a previous council fully funded and started. I think that's just not good governance to have us dramatically change course every four years. So let's speak to edge signs in in principle, speak to why I picked version 2.1.1. I'd initially be inclined to say the city of Grand or to say the the city of Grand Prairie reflects our logo, but I think that this weekend I got to host a whole bunch of people in our city, and they kept on telling me that they felt so welcome here. And that's something that I hear again and again from people as they visit here, that Grand Prairie's got people that are really able to welcome people into our community and to include them. And I think this is just so much better than just say in the city of Grand Prairie. I know city of Grand Prairie is more accurate, it's our logo, you know, it differentiates us from that county sign they maybe just saw. But I think it's great to communicate to people as they come in that you're welcome here and this is your home.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressey. Open for discussion and debate. I don't see anybody ringing in, so then I will. Thank you. Okay, that's why I do it very, very slowly. Counselor O'Toole.
I was wondering if there's any way we can incorporate the city of Grand Prairie scenes that the county outside of ours is county of Grand Prairie. I was wondering if there's one way we can identify that there is a two, two actual municipalities here. I wanted to discuss that.
Sure. So Counselor Bressey's motion is specific to the one that was shown on the screen is the 2.1.1, I think.
And I and I like that one, but it doesn't say the city of Grand Prairie, just says Grand Prairie.
That's that's true.
Like to have welcome to the city of Grand Prairie if.
Then then I would encourage you to vote against Counselor Bressey's motion. And if that motion fails, to make a subsequent motion. Yeah, rather than us getting into building a sign by a whole bunch of amendments, if you don't like that version, then I think we should, you should vote against it and and make a motion for what you'd like to see reflected. I don't see anybody else in the queue. I'll just say that I support the the motion as put forward with respect to the municipality. I think I think residents don't really care about the municipality. I don't think they really care whether it's a city or a county. I think residents care about our community, and really, our community of Grand Prairie is bigger than the city boundary. I would reflect that the people that live in Wedgewood and Carriage Lane and other places that we might sort of reflect as technically in the county are really a part of our community. And I think what we should be welcoming people to is Grand Prairie community rather than the municipality, which frankly, I don't really think, certainly visitors don't care what is city and county. They just care about this community of Grand Prairie that they've come to. So that's why I support the motion as made. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressey, if you'd like to move on to the subsequent motions. And maybe we can do all of these together, because there really are one package here.
Well, boy, if these motions pass, I look forward to telling my kids their dad picked out the entrance sign. Anyways, I'm gonna, I move that council direct administration to prepare an RFQ for the supply and installation of two community entrance features and delegate to administration the awarding of the RFQ.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressey. Any discussion or debate on that motion? I don't see anybody ringing in or flinching towards their voting pad, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Bressey, was there anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
A couple, a couple of things worth highlighting is the committee accepted a delegation from Grand Prairie Slow Pitch, who was talking about about the state of softball in Grand Prairie and had some very interesting numbers that I'm interested to dive deeper into and learn what's going on regionally, but made a pretty compelling case that there's been less opportunity for slow pitch created over the last, over the last few years, just no, not intentionally, but as some diamonds have faced issues and not been and brought down, but not brought back up again. And also, they highlighted the potential that South Bear Creek Park has to be a world-class tournament facility. In fact, I think it already is, ways to make it even better and able to host even bigger, better events and welcome people to our city in better ways. And so committee asked administration to go and do some work to come back and say what it might look like if we wanted to meet the requests. So I'm looking forward to seeing that in future day. Also present, another presentation we had was we had our person from finance and our East Link Center manager come and present about cost recovery at the East Link Center. And I won't go into all the numbers. I'll let you guys go through and read the report again if you want to dive into them. But the one thing that was worth highlighting that really surprised me was the equivalent about 5% of our city, which is also equivalent to about two small towns worth of people, are in the East Link Center doors every day. And I I think that I've always appreciated how appreciated how good a job East Link Center does. I don't think I've always appreciated how many people it touches on a daily basis. So that was really cool to read. The, a couple of things I'll also highlight from the director's service update is just saying a big thank you to Tim Hortons for their Tooney Tuesday sponsorship at the outdoor pool. That was really well received. And also highlighting that you might see driving around the community, these transit vehicles that aren't big buses, they look more like more like vans. And it's a way to right-size our fleet when appropriate, to not just create, not just create efficiencies within the organization, but also customers are reporting that they're enjoying those more than a big empty bus. And so I think it's a great example of administration looking for ways to not just do what we're doing with less, but to actually do more and enhance service with less. So I was excited to receive an update on that.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressey, and thanks again for stepping in on on that committee. That'll take us to 8.5 and the Pursuit of Excellence Committee, which I think was Counselor Friesen's.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the other day at the Pursuit of Excellence, we were able to support some coaching clinics. The big winner was coach development, sorry, the big winner was swimming, where Megan Speakman, Melissa Rogan, and Jordan Kotay all received some coach development funding. Also, this was a really cool clinic that we supported for GP Synquatics. And what they actually do is record the the synchronized swimmers as they do their routines and send that that recording off for critiquing. So because we don't have that level of coach coaching or or judging here in Grand Prairie, they actually send off video of them doing their routines and get feedback that way. So it's a really effective way to to develop our synquatics swimmers. So that was pretty exciting. And then we also gave some funding for athlete development for Ethan Fernandez in freestyle skiing. My understanding is he's getting to a pretty high level of representation at the national level out of Grand Prairie. So that's pretty exciting for us, and we were pleased to be able to support him. And that is Pursuit of Excellence for last Wednesday.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. If you'd like to move the minutes from that meeting, then?
Thank you. I will move that council approve the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting held last Wednesday, September 18, 2019, as presented.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, seeing no one ring in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That'll take us to item 9.1, which is a letter of correspondence to Grand Prairie Public Library. There is a motion that should arise from that with respect to appointing Fletcher Mudrick to provide auditing services to Grand Prairie Public Library from 2020 to 2025. Council, do I have a council member that'd be ready to make a motion with respect to that? Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve Fletcher Mudrick to provide auditing services to the Grand Prairie Public Library from 2020 to 2025.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That handles all of our items of correspondence for this afternoon, and we had nothing arising from the delegation business. We do have a notice of motion from administration. You'll see that in your packages, item 11.1, with respect to the city procedure bylaw. So administration's giving us notice that at subsequent council meeting, they intend to present that amendment to the procedure bylaw. So that's here for information this evening. There's no business arising, sorry, there's nothing for us to do this eve, this afternoon with respect to that. And with that, then we will enter into our recess, and we will return for our scheduled delegations at 6:00 PM, and we'll see everybody in a little bit.